Are you ready, Ty? We'd like to welcome everyone. Hello? I need a gavel. I don't have one. We'd like to welcome you all to the UNA County Commission meeting today. It is three o'clock on Tuesday, July 18th. And we want to first excuse Commissioner Horix, who is out of town today. But we will now start with the prayer by Matt Kazir and then the pledge by Susie Anderson.
I'm very grateful for this day, for the beautiful weather that we've been having. Grateful for the moisture we received this year and through the winter. Grateful for the abundance of water we had and for the manner in which it melted half of our mountains. We'd ask you to please bless and help us in my opinion. Guide it, Commissioner, guide us in the making, in order to make decisions in the best interest of our county. Grateful for all that we have and we ask you for these.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt and Susie. We'll now move to item number one, which is approval of the minutes of July 10th, 2023, and work session of the work session in July 11th, 2023, our regular meeting. Are there any corrections or questions?
Chair, I have read both of those. Didn't see any changes. Everything looked good. And I would make a motion to approve them both days.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Thank you. They are approved. So we'll move to item number two, which is our report of warrants. Our clerk auditor, Mike Wilkins.
Commissioners, I have warrants from July 14th. Whoa, that didn't have a total on it. Let's hope this one does. In the amount of $502,395.88. There were nothing in this one that was out of the ordinary. Nothing big that had been purchased. Just that was the bills for this time.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any tax matters?
I have no tax matters today.
Barbara, no tax matters today? Okay, thank you. So then we will move to item-
Can we put him, move him down, move past? John Hatterley is on the road coming, but he's not here yet.
Oh, okay. Yes, thank you. So item number four, we will put that on hold for right now. While we're waiting for the auditor, Mr. Hatterley, to make it here. We'll go to item number five, which is approval of the UGRC grant with the state. This is Brock Slaw, the county surveyor.
Brock Slaw, UNA County Surveyor. I am here to ask for a signature on the contract between us and the state of Utah for a grant of $44,084.01. This money is to be used for the location rehabilitation and recordation of section corner monuments located in Three South, 19 East. And it will be, the project is to be completed by May 15th of 2024.
Wow, thank you. For the audience, would you mind saying what UGRC stands for?
Yeah, so UGRC is, it's a mapping, it's, which is the best way to explain it to you. It's an office of the state of Utah that takes care of all the mapping of Utah. They are over when they imagery, shape files, different geographical files, allowing us to use them in our databases and different programs to help us find and locate properties. And so they're over, our section corners is part of the, helps us locate property on the face of the earth. So they are over the funding that the state has awarded the, there's a committee called the MRRC Committee, and they're over the funding that's given to us by the state, but the UGRC has to kind of pass through their office. So that's where that comes from.
Can you, do you mind telling me what the acronym stands for?
UGRC?
I just looked it up.
This is a quiz.
Utah Geospatial Resource Center.
Okay, the resource, I didn't know. I knew the Utah Geospatial, like, ah.
Thank you, thank you.
You think Google?
Yes. Okay. And do you have any questions?
I'd make a motion that we approve this and authorize signature.
Okay, do you mind saying the amount?
$44,084.01.
$44.01, yep.
Yep. Okay, and I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That was unanimous. Yes, probably me.
She's the chair.
Okay, I'll sign it again to you. Now we'll go to the Voca. Is Angie here for that presentation? Not yet. So we're going to also skip number six for right now to see if she's able to make it. So we'll go to number seven, provisions of the public defender contracts. Lance Dean, our public defender.
So we had a work session yesterday and I'd hate to be accused of being verbose here today. So if anyone has any questions from the work session yesterday, maybe that would be more efficient. Unless you'd like me to give more information.
I think a quick synopsis for the community at large here, we know what we're doing.
Be nice.
Sounds great. As a result of us losing an attorney that does juvenile court representation, we were unable to secure, we sent out an RFP to a lot of attorneys in the state and no one applied. And so I've decided to change the courts that I'm representing and start doing representation in the juvenile court to cover that, which is going to require a contract for the UNA County Justice Court, which I, which currently I do the representation on. And so we're asking for $54,000 added to our budget for that contract. It's about 161 cases per year, about 14 a month, and we think that 54,000 is a fair price. With the savings from me being a salaried employee going and doing juvenile court, that chunk of money is now available for us to do some much-needed increases for the frontline attorneys that I have working here and there, five of them. And so with that savings of money, we would be able to do some increases that haven't happened since the, since my department began and so.
Which was five years ago? How long ago was that?
Yes, in the end of 2018.
Awesome. And I'm sorry, what did, did you state what the increase would be?
$54,000.
$54,000. So the exact amount of what his contract was?
That's, that's, oh, his contract was in the $73,000 range. And so the difference between that, what we're going to be using to increase the contracts with the remaining attorneys.
Okay.
We were trying to get their, their, the money that they receive somewhat competitive, at least in the ballpark with other systems that have increased their, the income that they, they give to their attorneys as well.
Now, is this increase needed for the whole year or just six months?
Going forward.
So if I give you half of that, will that suffice you until we redo budgets next year?
Well, if you do that, then we're not going to be able to be competitive. And my concern is that we won't be able to secure seasoned, experienced attorneys in our area. It's hard enough to get people to come out here. And so we've had to reach out to attorneys from out of the area to secure these contracts. And so we're trying to keep it in the ballpark of what the other systems are doing.
I think what he was trying to say is if you're asking about 54,000, is that what you said?
Yeah.
That that would just be half of that roughly for the rest of this year?
Right. I think it would be about 22.5 from talking to Mr. Wilkins. Maybe he can say it more briefly than I can.
I think that was the question that Commissioner Larson asked is 54,000, what it's going to cost us in a 12-month period?
Right, oh, okay, I see.
So we're only looking at making a budget adjustment in our next budget increase of about 25,000, thereabouts, for the balance of this year because these contracts will become effective August 1st.
Yeah, we're hoping to, we're hoping to get this done August 1st.
Right. So I think that's what he was just saying was we could approve the increase, but it would only increase our budget by 22.5 roughly? 25,000, say? Approximately 25,000. Okay.
He always rounds up.
I know. It's a good practice.
Probably a good practice.
You like a pleasant surprise when you don't meet, meet that number.
Okay.
Okay, good, good comment. Any other questions?
No, based on his answer to the last question I had, confused him, of course. I would make a motion that we approve up to $27,000 for this year.
27?
Or 25,000, I can't, well.
25 is what?
27 is half of 54.
Well, we're-
And we got a month out, so 20, 25 is all you get. 25,000 to provide public defender contracts and other things that he's got. Increase in attorneys.
Thank you.
Okay, I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So with that, if we can have just a quick discussion then. I talked with, I had an email with Tanya and then I talked with Lance today. We need to do a modification to Lance's essential job functions for his employment, so we'll take care of that. So Commissioner Larson, you may get information to you because you're, you're assigned over the-
Correct.
Public Defender Department. And so if you can just be, be ready to see those changes on those essential job functions.
Sure.
The other question that has come up, in our procurement code, we, we have typically sent out contracts for public defenders out into the open market and get, and you know, we'd get responses back and then we would find who's the most qualified and then maybe even need to negotiate a few of the terms. This last go-around, which is necessitating one of these changes, is we didn't get any applicants. We have a need for a justice court, right? Am I getting my court right? Okay, we're, we have a need for a justice court contract to start August 1st because we won't have anybody in that position. Under our procurement code, we do have the ability where we can go out for professional services. We've typically not used it in this setting. We've used that for engineering, outside legal counsel for tribal issues, EPA issues, things that take, you know, a lot of expertise.
Right.
And we've usually done the RFP process through this. But because of the quick turnaround and knowing that the last time we sent this out, we received zero responses, I just wanted to throw out this idea that we just allow Lance to go out and see if he can find somebody to take this justice court contract. Because if we do the normal process of noticing it, doing the two weeks, getting any responses back, if any, you know, we're, we're out two to four weeks before we're ready to offer that to somebody. And then if that person needs to adjust their caseload or quit a job or do whatever to take on that caseload, we could be even farther out. So, and there are some provisions where we skip that also if it's going to cause undue delay. There, there's a few other provisions in our purchasing policy. So I just wanted to bring that up with everybody here, with the commission, with the public defender department, with our clerk auditor. If, if everybody's okay, I feel comfortable. I think what I would do though is advise that we make sure we only enter into a one-year contract with this person. And then, then we can get back into our normal, our normal routine of how we do things. Because we also have the other competing that if somebody wants to get a government contract, they need to have the ability to put their name in the hat. But we're operating under such quick timeline that we don't really have enough time to send it out.
If I could add to that, once this, we start, you know, reshuff, redoing the contracts, my intent is to have the contract actually go till December. So, because we've got some contracts that end in June and some that end in December. And we're just going to start everybody in December or January.
January 1.
Start in January.
So this would be a-
It'll be a five-month contract.
And then we'd go through our regular process after that.
Right. Now, my intent would be to have the provision in there that says if everybody's okay with it, we could extend it two more years. I don't have to do that on this one if, if that's what your wishes are.
Well, I know there was discussion, if it's okay, well, information that, that we could possibly separate these cases out amongst the acting attorneys, is that correct?
Not for the UNA County Justice Court, but one of my other-
That has to be a separate contract?
One of my other duties, because we have an MOU with Daggett County and we cover, they pay a set amount and then we cover all of the defense-related needs that they have. And so when we increase the contracts for the district court attorneys, my intent is to put a contract provision in there. We'll need the forms approved probably next week. But to put a provision in there that allows for them to cover the Daggett cases and we're going to split what my caseload was into four, with four attorneys. So they're really only going to have about five or six extra cases per year.
Okay. Okay.
So on this one, I would probably be comfortable advising, well, I would be comfortable. Why qualify it? I would be comfortable if we wanted to do a year and five month. But after that, I think we need to get this back into our normal process of, if there is some other interested party out there that wants to try and secure one of these contracts, we need to make sure we have it at least somewhat open. So it's not constantly just getting awarded to the same people. But we're, so we're doing a little bit of looking at the facts and analyzing the facts now, but then also looking at, okay, let's try and get this back into our regular process. We follow it as quickly as possible. That may be a little bit easier for Lance to find somebody if they know that they have a one-year and five-month contract instead of, hey, take this contract for five months and guess what? We don't know what's going to happen to your life after that. That makes it a little hard to take on a contract. So I don't know with, I know I'm taking a little bit of time, but we didn't have this to discuss in, in work session yesterday. Mike, just looking at you as the auditor and for our purchasing procurement code, does that seem appropriate with where we're finding ourselves right now?
I would concur with that because it is professional services. Just like you said, we can reach out and at this point, if we can find someone that's willing to do it, we did it either for five months or the year and five months, whatever works, I think we can be fine that way.
And then we just try and get back into cycle when we can, right?
Put in the, in the agreements that you can be extended for, you know, if, if all parties agree, if it's written in it. But it's been several years since we did, since we have rebid that one, probably five years or better.
Well, the UNA County Justice Court is never-
Correct, not the justice court, the others.
The district court, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get together. So, okay, so my, my intent then is, is in a future, upcoming agenda item would be to have the new contracts, the form of the contracts be approved because we'll be adding the Daggett language to the district court ones and creating a new one for the UNA County Justice Court one.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll just get those-
We'll do that next week.
And then, and then you can run with them.
Okay.
You have two weeks. We won't be meeting next week.
Yeah, next week is a holiday.
You have to meet. Okay.
Okay, thank you. I don't know, did we finish that one? I don't think we did.
There was a vote, yes.
And an approval, aye? Okay, good.
I, I took, I jumped on after the vote was taken.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and go back up to number four now, which is presentation of our audit from Larson and Company by John Hatterley. That's okay. We were quick.
Yeah, it'll be noted.
I had to follow a bunch of campers on the way from.
We understand that totally.
All right. This is going to be exciting. Okay, I'm going to go over a letter that we're required to communicate with you as a commission and then we'll go over the audit. As you get the communication with governance letter, so it'll be like a three-page letter. This is strictly for the county, for the commissioners and management. It doesn't really accompany the audit, so if you send out the audit, it doesn't go with it. This is just communication for you guys. And it kind of outlines our responsibilities for the financial statement audit. That's all in the engagement letter, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. We're required to identify or let you know what our significant risks were as part of our audit. So there's three, and then I'm, I need to actually give an explanation. So the three that we had as part of our audit was improper revenue recognition, cash disbursements, and then potential management bias, estimates, and the ability to override controls. So what these risks are is all of our audits are done on a risk basis. So every area in your financial statements gets assigned a risk. So cash gets assigned a risk, capital assets, revenue, fund balance. What that does is it dictates how we perform our audit and how, what kind of tests we are required to perform. Then we have overall risk that is really for the, the audit in, in total. So like improper revenue recognition, ever since the late 80s, early 90s, since the fall of Enron, Arthur Andersen, they were, what they were doing was manipulating the revenue to increase shareholder wealth. So now every engagement that we perform, we're required to recognize that as a significant risk. Does that mean that the county has issues? No, that doesn't mean that the county has issues. It's just driving my team on how we perform tests. So we have to do specific tests over revenue to address that risk. So based on our audit procedures, we didn't find any material misstatements in the financials being caused by those significant risks. So hopefully that helps clarify. I don't know, I, I get asked on that all the time because everybody freaks out about, well, what are these significant risks that, you know, do we have major issues that we need to take care of? It really just drives my audit and the kind of tests that we have to perform, like I said. All right, I won't spend a lot of time on that. Qualitative significant and significant accounting practices. We look at the way the accounting policies are being applied in the county, make sure that they're right, make sure that they're in accordance with GAAP, which is the generally accepted accounting principles. We look at your accounting estimates. Any, any set of financial statements is going to have estimates built into them. And our job is to make sure that those estimates are, A, they're reasonable and that they're consistent over periods of time. You don't want fluctuations in your financial statements being caused by estimates because when you as a commission or management is looking at prior historical financial data, trying to plan for the future, if you have these big swings that are being caused by estimates, then it's really hard to plan because you don't know what's going to happen. And you can really build bias into your estimates as well. You can say, well, we, we, you know, we are more favorable and so we're going to present a favorable financial position because it's an estimate. We can kind of give a good picture when maybe that really isn't the case. So we make sure that they're consistent and they're reasonable over time. The only estimate that we really identified that would not be in your control would be the Utah retirement system. So you guys are just told specifically you have to contribute so much per employee and type of employee, and then it's really out of your hands. And then every year, at the end of the year, you have to record your net pension liability, your net pension asset, and the deferred inflows and outflows because it's a cost-sharing plan. I don't really like it. I understand it because I'm an accountant and I understand the theory behind it. But it's something that all the local governments have to do in the state of Utah now. The reason why I bring this up is because in 2021, you had a very large net pension liability. Well, during that 2021 period and into 2022, whatever happened, it was the markets or the contributions. Now everybody in the state has a net pension asset. So you went from a liability on your books to now an asset on your books, and that's just an estimate. Anytime you get an actuary involved in future events, it's an estimate. 2023 is probably going to go back to a liability, knowing the markets. So you'll look at your financial statements and you'll have, in order to get to a liability, from a liability to an estimate, you've got to have some kind of a revenue. So you've increased your fund balance and next year, you're going to decrease your fund balance and it's going to be in the revenue and the expenses. So those are the types of estimates that we look at. And like I said, that one's really out of your control. What I would suggest as your auditor or just as a financial person is if you're looking to make decisions, is that you back out anything related to the URS when you're looking at financial numbers. Because really, that net pension liability or that net pension asset is not really an asset or a liability unless everybody in the URS decided, hey, we're all going to retire and we have to fully fund the retirement plan. All right, enough of that. That was kind of boring. Sorry, I just bored myself. Significant difficulties performed, encountered in performing the audit. We didn't have any difficulties. There weren't any uncorrected misstatements, any adjustments that we had. We had Mike review them and he accepted them and posted them to the trial balance. We didn't have any disagreements with management. Circumstances that affect the form and content of the auditor's report. So there's specific language that has to be in the audit report. And if there's issues that we find in our audit that would change that report, like if we qualified your audit or if there was a going concern issue, then we have to communicate that to you, but there weren't, wasn't anything, so it'll just be a standard report. Representations, we get representations from the county. In fact, you guys are going to sign it for us today. That's, there's a couple of things that we're waiting. I guess I should preface this by, the report's right now in draft form, so we're, we're just waiting for a couple of things. I think we're waiting for an attorney letter and then the representation letter before we, before I can sign them and issue them. But that representation letter is kind of like our engagement letter to you. It's your representations to us that you've, you're open and honest with your communications that we've been made aware of, anything that we need to be made aware of so that we can make sure that our opinion is correct. Consultations with other accountants, if there are disagreements that come up, you can go out and talk to a third-party auditor. We just request that we know that you're talking to somebody and that we also have access to that person so that we can present our understanding of, you know, whatever the situation is. We can come to an agreement and move forward with the audit. All right. Now the financial statement audit. So always at the very beginning of your audit package will be the audit report. Like I said, this is very standard language that's very specific to auditors. So most auditors who read this, they, they don't understand the language. Our opinion on the financial statements is an unmodified or an unqualified opinion. That's a clean opinion in our world. I don't understand why we unqualify something if it's good, but we accountants are backwards. So as you read through this, you can see that it includes our, the basis for our opinions, so the guidance that we have to follow, not only the generally accepted accounting principles, but also government auditing standards. Your responsibilities for the financial statements are, A, the financial statements. So we have Mike review the financial statements to make sure that all the language is correct in the notes that he wants to have in there. Our job is to give an opinion on the financial statements. And as part of our audit, we are required to exercise professional judgment and professional skepticism. That, that means that we feel like you're doing it right, but it's our job to verify that. So it's kind of the trust but verify. We have to identify and assess our own risks. So like I said, each area in the financial statements gets assigned a risk and whether or not, you know, we have to increase our testing because something has a little bit more risk. We look at your internal controls, A, to make sure that you have controls in place and B, that they're actually functioning. You can put as many controls in place, but if you're not actually following them, then they don't really mean anything. And then we look at your accounting policies. We've talked about that. One of the things that you are required to look at and that we're required to communicate to you is if there are issues that arise that would prohibit, prohibit you from continuing as a going concern, then you have to internally do an analysis to, A, identify what the issue is and then how, how are you going to get over that? The best example that I have most recently is COVID. I hate that we go back to COVID as our new timeline, but that's kind of, it changed the world, right? Well, during that period, there were a lot of businesses that did not survive, and it affected a lot of governments. Luckily, inside the state of Utah, it really didn't affect a lot of businesses and governments like it did across the country or outside of the country. However, they didn't address that as part of their financial statements. They didn't say, hey, this is a potential going concern issue for us. We're gonna lose all of our business because we had to shut down. Or governments didn't say, we lost significant amount of sales tax revenue, or people couldn't pay their property taxes because their businesses were failing, or people were losing their jobs. So it inadvertently affected those entities. And as external sources who use your financial statements, they rely on the data that's in here to give you loans, to give you business, things like that. And where those issues were not presented, then it became a legal issue later on when those businesses went bankrupt or they failed because there was no discussion of, hey, we have this issue that's gonna affect us over the next 12 months, maybe 24 months. So now, you are required to identify any conditions or events that happen as you are putting together the financial statements or things are happening during the year. And we're also required, as part of our audit, to look for those things and really disclose them in the financial statements. All right, required supplementary information. There are certain sections of the financial statements that don't fall under our opinion, but they're required to always accompany the financial statements, and that's the management's discussion analysis. And then right after the notes, there's a section that's specifically called required supplementary information, and that's where your budget schedules are, as well as the URS pension information. Just remember that they don't fall under the opinion. We've tied all the numbers back to make sure that they're accurate, but they don't fall under the opinion. And then supplementary information, there is a section called supplementary information. That would be any of your combining statements as well as your single audit. All right. The next report we're required to issue is for us, really stating that we've performed your audit in accordance with government auditing standards. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it. It talks about us looking at your internal control, looking for significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that need to be corrected. However, we didn't identify any this year. The next report that we're required to issue is for the state auditor. So your compliance with the sections that they feel are important this year that we're required to test. There weren't a lot for the county. We test your budgetary compliance, your fund balance, anything to do with restricted taxes, making sure that you submit your fraud risk assessment, and then your government fees. And we actually give an opinion on your compliance, but it's very specific to these areas. I always put that caveat in because I've had people approach me and say, well, hey, you gave us a clean opinion on our compliance, but yet we know we're out of compliance on this area of state code. It's not a legal opinion, that's John's job. Our job doesn't have anything to do with law. So however, it is an unmodified or an unqualified opinion as far as your compliance with state code, specific to these areas. And in fact, there weren't any immaterial state compliance findings that we need to discuss this year, so that's good. The next report that we're required to issue is for the federal government, and this is on your single audit. So there are two separate audits. So we give an opinion on our financial statements, that's one audit. This is your federal single audit, which is an entirely separate audit. We always do them concurrently because it's less costly for the county. This report actually is a qualified opinion. That means that there were issues that were material in nature, and this is a compliance issue, so material non-compliance. And you can read through, and it kind of mimics the audit report, so you can kind of see where we get our guidance from, and that is directly from the federal government, sometimes specifically from agencies directly. And our compliance supplement is about 2,000 pages long, so my staff get to read that every year because they have changes to it every year. But that's where we get our guidance from. So as far as the findings in question costs on the single audit, and this is where I wanna spend some significant time on, and I'm not gonna take a lot of time, but just wanna go over these. So the financial statements, the opinion on the financial statements is unmodified, and there were not any reportable conditions as far as the financial statements directly. However, there was a material weakness as far as compliance goes. And the major program that we tested this year was the ARPA funds, so the coronavirus, the American Rescue Plan. So the issue with that was there are four prohibited things that you could not do under ARPA. And two of those were you could not reduce deficit or debt, and you could not reduce your property tax rate. So you couldn't use that money to pay off debt or to replace revenue that would've came in under property taxes. The finding actually is that the county paid off a significant amount of debt last year as well as reduced the property tax rate. And I'm not here to say that you used the ARPA money for those purposes. However, because you did those two things, it's really an uncertainty for somebody externally to say, well, okay, those funds were not used to replace the funds that we paid off debt or replaced tax revenue that we lost because we decreased our tax rate. So that's kind of the criteria that you had to follow. The other one, unlike the LATCF funds that you're now receiving, you also couldn't use those for rainy day funds. I mean, that's the point of LATCF is really the rainy day funds. So you couldn't use ARPA money to kind of save it to spend later on. You had to spend it on things that were related to infrastructure or the coronavirus or a future pandemic. So really, at this point, it's gonna be kind of up to the treasury. I mean, we just reported, hey, they weren't in compliance with these two areas. I don't know if the treasury will respond to it. They may or may not. But we'll work with a corrective action plan with Mike to just, we'll have to submit a corrective action plan going into the future. Our recommendation is really to identify, because it was a significant amount of money, where that money's gonna be spent, and really outline, okay, this is not gonna replace any revenue. It was not used to pay off any of the debt, and what it actually is gonna be spent on. I don't know if they'll ask you, but that's probably our recommendation. The other recommendation is anytime that you get a federal award, you really need to make sure you know what the allowable costs are versus the unallowable costs. The result is it potentially could affect your ability to get federal grants in the future if you're continually not in compliance. So, all right. Prior year findings that we need to discuss. I don't think that there's any continuation of the prior findings. Most of the findings that you've had in the past, I think, have been addressed and corrected. I expect that to be the case going forward. So I think we're gonna close all the prior findings that we have as far as prior years. So that'll be good for the, kind of close out prior years. Any questions?
No, I just appreciate you explaining all of this in layman's terms because I have listened to several audit reports, and many times, they're way over anyone in the room's head except the financial person that is there for that entity. So thank you, I appreciate that straightforward approach and stating all of the pertinent factors.
And I just want you to tell me what this audit consists of time-wise.
Time-wise?
When was your audit, from what to what? Like January 1 to December 31st?
March till now. I think the biggest time, the longest time we had to wait was for component units. And this is something that you as a commission, I would say, that you would address with component units. And you're not alone. This is something that I fight with in every county, in American Samoa, wherever we're at. We struggle getting the component units getting their stuff done because for them, they know they have until June 30th, and maybe beyond it if they're just being ignorant and slow. However, all of those roll up into your audit, and it takes time for us to roll those up and then get the financial statements completed. So if they're done on June 30th, there's no way you guys are gonna be done on June 30th, right? And so I would say, I actually have talked to the state auditor because I would like all the component units to be due at the end of May. And that gives you 30 days to get the reports and get them to us, and then we can finish things. As far as the county goes, we got all the information. Most of the county audit was done probably mid-May. We're ready to issue, so.
I think you misunderstood my question. What period of time did this audit cover?
Oh, 2022.
January 2022.
All of 2022.
December 31st of 2022.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so that'd be a previous group.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
No, thank you. I think you guys done a bang-up job. Hopefully, you've got all our little audits in.
Yeah, like I said, well, I think John's gonna send me a letter this week, and then Mike's gonna have you sign the letter, and then we'll get it formally issued and submit it to the state, and then we'll submit it to the federal government. It has to be submitted to the federal government.
Just for clarity, I got the attorney request middle of last week.
Yep. Yeah, we have to get the, so, and that's another hard part is we have to get the attorney letter within 10 days of when we're gonna issue. And so it always puts a hard strain on the attorney. So I really appreciate it, John, that you put together the letter that quick. It is a short turnaround time, and that is just something that we have to have within 10 days of our audit report, and so we appreciate it, John.
When does our audit have to be turned into the state?
Soon as we get it done.
Oh, there's not a deadline?
June 30th.
June 30th.
Oh.
That's the deadline, but that's what I'm saying is, that's why I would, as a commission, communicate to the component units that we really need to have those done prior to June 30th. I would say by June 1st.
We did.
We tried anyway, that's what it's like.
Keep barking.
Yes, and then, that was what I was gonna ask. You have received all of those, though?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, everything's done.
We didn't receive those till like June 5th, or July 5th to the 10th before we actually received them. So that's why I put pressure on you as commissioners and said on those boards, and anybody else down that sits on those boards, push your auditors that you want that report done by May 30th.
Yep, you're not alone.
It just holds us up.
I don't have a problem with that. They can schedule it.
A lot of the counties have struggled. I mean, we still had two or three counties that are still waiting for component units. And like I said, it's an issue. I'd like to deal with it at the state level, but it hasn't really caught hold yet. But it's, I don't know, it helps you guys if you can get your audits done on time. It looks good for the counties, but sometimes it's delayed, so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Have a nice.
Do you have any questions?
Will do. I might add that we did interact with a lot of the auditing staff, if not all of it. They were all great. They answered all of our questions. There was no, I don't know, let me go look and find out, or call John, or whatever. So great job as far as I'm concerned, I appreciate it.
Thank you. We will now go to item number six, which is the VOKA presentation for the Attorney's Office, Angie Simper.
First of all, I apologize for my tardiness. Rarely ever happens. So I just wanted to kind of give a little brief update on what's been going on in our office. I recently submitted my grant application to VOKA. Unfortunately, throughout the state of Utah, VOKA had been cut 40% of their budget. So we knew that budget cuts were coming. So in order to try to self-sustain, which is one of the requirements that they had, the county attorney, the county attorney's office absorbed me as a full-time employee, including my benefits, office supplies, training, everything. So I now work for the county attorney's office. We did have a shift in staff, so I'm hiring a new person. She should start on the 25th, and she's coming in at 30 hours a week. I feel like between her and the other girl that is working with me, I feel like we can still successfully help the victims in our community. We have continued to try to mitigate and reduce any costs that we can. And another part of our requirements for our VOKA grant is to administer exit evaluations, which is gonna be interesting. I'm really excited because I do feel like we can successfully help the victims in our community in our best efforts. I really feel like we're gonna do a wonderful job. And I know that there may be some exit evaluations because the situations that people are in that we're working with, they're just not happy. But for the most part, I'm really hoping for great feedback. So I want VOKA and the county to know that we are utilizing the funds, and this is what the public has to say about it. So I'm really excited about implementing that. And cases have not gone down. I don't have my numbers with me right now, but they are ever increasing. I'm waiting for a LOL, but I have not found it yet. And I think that might be all that I had to report on. We had a few revisions to our grant, but it was awarded. So we just needed to fix a couple of little things. And we should be finished for the next two years, so that will be nice. In the future, should the hours for my other girls that are working for me not be sufficient, I will definitely reapply for more money to be able to give people more hours. So I think that might be it. I apologize for missing last meeting, I had COVID. You're welcome for not coming in.
We heard that, and some other things.
What's up?
And some other things we heard, they stacked it up on you.
Yes, when it rains, it pours.
It did. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I had just a couple. I apologize if I've asked this before, but you have three then that work in the, for VOKA, in the VOKA office?
I had three because I was part of the VOKA, but now just two because I don't work for VOKA, which is actually really nice because VOKA is very strict about what services VOKA is allowed to assist with. And where I'm not a VOKA-funded person, I can kind of, you know, jump in and out when I'm needed on serious cases that VOKA is just shaking their head at. So it is nice to have someone that's not VOKA-funded in the office because we're able to help a wider variety of people, for sure.
I was just gonna ask if that, have you looked at other counties, like similar to us and that? And is that what they're doing? They have the same staff? Do they have more, you know, or are they doing it different throughout the state?
So in Dushane County, they've completely disassembled their...
The VOKA program?
Their victim advocate program, which is really sad. I recently was voted in as the victim assistant, or the Victim Rights Council Chair. And so when victims of crime feel like their victim rights have been violated, they are to fill out a form, which goes out to Salt Lake, and then they screen it at UOVC, which is the Utah Office for Victims of Crime, and then they send it back to me. And on our Victim Rights Council, we have sheriffs, chief, county attorney. We just have a lot of people that have eyes on that to make sure that the rights were not violated. And I will tell you, without having a victim advocate program, we have received quite a few. Which is very frustrating because the person I took it from said, oh, I've had one in about 10 years. I've had 10 in the last three months. So it's not great, it's really not great. So I'm very grateful that the county has continued to understand that this program is invaluable to our community. And we're very grateful for that, as well as the community members, I'm sure, and the attorneys, because we do help them kind of act as that liaison so that... because we do help them kind of act as that liaison, so that they're not bombarded with questions. A lot of the services that we provide that I don't think that people understand is getting your life back together after, um, a catastrophe has happened. So, we offer housing, we offer mental health, we offer trauma therapy, we offer medical assistance, we offer funding. We just have a plethora of services that we're able to provide to get families back on their feet. So, um, we are working diligently. I'm just beyond excited to have a new person in the office, because we are really short-staffed, which is why I was late today. I had a sentencing, so, um, but yeah.
Perfect. Um, and you've already stated it, but can you just tell us what the acronym VOKA means?
The Victims of Crime Act.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions?
We're accepting this as our new employee introduction.
Yes, I guess that would qualify, yes.
Very good. We appreciate it, Angie. You're doing a great job.
And you did say this contract, this grant is for two years?
Two years, yes.
Okay.
And fingers crossed, because I've been in, um, working with VOKA for about thirteen years now, and they do have highs and lows. So, this is a low, so maybe next year will be high.
Yes.
Fingers crossed, so.
Yes, all right.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thanks. Okay, we will move to item number eight on the agenda, ordinance number zero-six dash two-six-two-zero-two-three-zero-two-oh-two. Amend chapter seventeen point three-three uses. It's the use table and additional regulations. Matt Kuzier with our community development.
So, as you'll see by the, uh, ordinance number, this was looked at at a work session, um, back on the twenty-sixth of June. And so, um, I'll try and go through it here a little bit quickly, so, and you guys have had it for several weeks to look at it as well. Okay, so, uh, as I go through the table here, uh, you'll see that there's some different coloring and different things. So, the green and the yellow colors, the general green here and the yellow, are what are currently on the table. The orange here and the lighter green color are changes, represent changes, uh, to permitted uses and conditional uses. And then the red boxes here represent a deletion, um, to that box. So, uh, just so everybody's kind of on the same page as reviewing this. So, you can see that here on the, the first page, there are several changes. And, and part of this is taking away, um, some areas where bed and breakfast inns are allowed, uh, which is the R-one and R-two zones, which are primarily, um, either single-family residential or higher-density residential. And so, that change was, um, proposed by the planning commission. And again, I'll just explain this. All these changes have been, um, recommended to the commission by the planning commission. And then there were a couple of changes that were made at the request of the commission based on the work session. So, we'll look at those as well, but, um, and then the other changes are, we're breaking campgrounds out into two different, um, types of campground. And this is to follow more closely along with what the Health Department requires for different types of campgrounds. And so you have semi-developed campgrounds and semi-primitive campgrounds. And you can see that they're allowed in, uh, several of the, kind of the outlying zones, where you'd expect to see camping and things. And then you have this number in here, which represents a number down below the table that we'll get to, um, as we go through. So, you can see they're allowed as a conditional use and as permitted uses in the different zones. Moving down through, um, changes to educational facilities on where those are allowed. And these are, um, commercial-type educational facilities, not in-home, which you can see down below. So, um, those are proposed to be removed from the, the more residential-type zones. And then, um, we've added entertainment slash amusement facilities indoor and outdoor, on two separate lines here. And the indoor ones are allowed in the commercial and industrial zones, where you would expect to see those kind of, of things. And then the outdoor ones are expanded to where they're allowed to, um, some of our more rural-type zoning, uh, like, uh, A-three and A-four, which are the, the agricultural zones on the west side of the county, and then MG-one and RFM, um, which are the more even rural zones around. And then, um, we've added indoor and outdoor event centers. And we'll go through the definitions in the next ordinance, so I won't spend time on those, or the next resolution, so. And you can see, again, the indoor stuff is in the commercial industrial zones, and the outdoor stuff is, um, in our outlying zones. And again, you'll see there, there's numbers, which means that there's, uh, conditions that are attached to those. Nothing on this next page. Changes, and then here on page five, there are some changes. So, we did have in our ordinance before reception centers, but, um, it's proposed that we add reception centers indoor and reception centers outdoor. And this one is a little different than the event centers and the, uh, other things, because it, the indoor ones are allowed in some of our outlying zones and in the commercial and industrial areas. And then the outdoor are allowed more broadly throughout the county. And again, there's very specific definitions for what a reception center is, so it couldn't be, um, couldn't be interpreted to be an entertainment-type thing, so. Okay, and then, um, recreation camps, uh, that was already part of our code. But you can see that they were expanded in where they can, um, be placed throughout the county. And then some regulations were added to, just to help make them compatible with those new areas. Uh, recreational vehicle storage, uh, was already in our ordinance, uh, but there were some changes to it. Just adding this number twenty-eight, which is our storage unit section, which is how the recreational vehicle storage stuff was being applied, um, anyway. And so, and then it was expanded to, um, some additional zones as well. Some of the more outlying zones. Uh, social clubs were removed from several zones. Uh, we don't really see many social clubs anymore, so. I don't know that that really affects, uh, anything or anybody. I haven't seen one in the seventeen years I've been here, so. There are still some around that from before, but I don't see any new ones. Moving down to the next page, um, just changing term from travel trailer court to RV park. Travel trailer courts, uh, this was in our nineteen, our earliest code, like nineteen fifty-six, so. Just an update in terminology there for that, and then adding it to the, uh, A-three, uh, zoning. And keeping it the same, the, the general requirement's the same. And then, uh, changes to veterinary clinics and hospitals. Uh, we did have veterinary hospitals in our code before, but it covered everything. Any kind, any type of veterinary service was covered. Planning commission looked at breaking it out to, uh, clinics, which would be smaller clinics. That would be maybe a clinic that you might see in a strip mall for small animals, um, emergency care, things like that. And a veterinary hospital would be a full service. They may have outdoor areas for large animals and, and things like that. Okay, now down to, uh, the changes below. So, these numbers here represent the numbers that we saw up above. Uh, storage units and recreational vehicle storage was the only change to twenty-eight. And then number thirty-seven, this is our semi-developed campgrounds and recreation camps. And you'll see that the first, probably half of these have to deal, have to do with how the, uh, campground operates, not necessarily improvements, but how it operates. And then the last, uh, half of those have to deal with, have to do with, uh, how it's developed and requirements there. Um, there was one change in this, well, there are two changes in this one, uh, here under N, are the two changes. So, N was, um, that it can be larger than eight acres. This was discussed at the work session. Uh, this was the only point of disagreement with the planning commission. And so that eight-acre minimum was removed. And, um, then it was also discussed that there should be a minimum distance between each campsite. And so that was, um, put in at twenty feet between each campsite.
Before you get too far away, go back up to F.
Yeah.
If quiet hours are from ten to six, why are you restricting generators before a ten?
I don't know.
Just, I think they felt like ten PMs, uh, usually, uh, the noise ordinance thing is ten PM or eleven PM. And so I think they were just trying to coincide with that, saying you can't use them after ten PM.
But he's asking about the generators, uh, have a different time.
Oh, having a different time than the quiet hours?
Yeah, I don't understand that. I've never seen that before.
That is interesting. I don't know. I know when I'm camping, I don't like a generator to come on at six AM, but.
Amen, but that's pretty common.
Yeah.
Okay. And then moving down to semi-primitive camps. Again, a lot of the rules are the same as the semi-developed camps. Um, and the first part's more about operation, and then the first, uh, about the first half of the requirements are about operations, and then the second half are about, um, how it's developed. And again, this, we were added in here, the, the distance between campsites of twenty feet, and that is, uh, right here under L. Uh, so that was added in based on, uh, the work session.
I did have a question. I noticed on H, um, because I've been camping since we went over this, dogs must be kept under restraint and cannot be left unattended. What about, is there some leash law or anything, though, that goes with the campgrounds, like just because it's in the county, or?
Um, I'm not sure what the leash laws are within the county, but they would have to follow the general leash laws as well.
On top of that, correct? Okay.
Uh, any, uh, county-wide laws or things would have to be followed the same.
As well, okay.
Okay, and then, uh, we get down into the outdoor entertainment and amusement facilities, uh, number thirty-nine here. And, um, it's talking about that they have to comply with commercial site plan requirements, because they're a commercial, it's a commercial use. They have, have to have at least two accessible restrooms, um, and possibly more, depending on the number of people or type of activities that they're doing. Um, either the Health Department or the Building, uh, Department could require more restrooms than that, but have bare minimum, at least a male and a female restroom. All off-street parking, uh, shall be road-based gravel or asphalt or concrete. And then entrances have to be, have to match the road they're coming off of. So, if they're coming off an asphalt road, it has to be asphalt for at least fifty feet. If they're coming off a gravel road, they have to be gravel for at least fifty feet, and then they could switch to one of the other things. They have to be a thousand feet away from a dwelling unit, unless they have written permission from that, the owner of that dwelling unit. And, they can have buildings there, but the buildings can't be used for the entertainment purposes. They would be there for, maybe if they're renting equipment, or, uh, maybe they're selling a few things there, but it wouldn't be used for the actual entertainment that would be taking place there. Uh, it would be something that's in conjunction with that use. And that, that was changed there, too, that the, um, the activity will, will be allowed, activity will be allowed indoors. So, no entertainment or amusement activity will be allowed indoors. There was a slight change in the verbiage there. I think it said in the buildings before, or something like that. And that was changed to indoors based on the, uh, work session. And outdoor event centers, um, very similar guidelines as the entertainment, outdoor entertainment stuff. Other than the event centers, uh, so these would be like, these could be for large events. Think of TuaCon or something like that. And so these would have to be located on a paved, on a class B paved road. Um, and so their entrance is going to have to be paved, um, as well. Where you get large groups of people coming all at one time, uh, there was concern about dust and different nuisances like that, so. And then the other, the other things are very similar to, um, the, what we just went over. Um, outdoor reception centers, again, these are, the requirements are very similar, um, to the, uh, entertainment, outdoor entertainment facilities, so. Nothing really changed for those. And those are the, the basic changes that have been recommended by the planning commission. They did recommend it. It was a three-to-one vote. Um, and again, the only point of disagreement that they had was that eight acres, eight-acre maximum in the, uh, semi-developed campground and the recreation camps, so.
I know we, I think we talked about this in the work session, but there was a reason they wanted these all split out individually, from entertainment center to convention center, or whatever they, we put those as. But yet, these descriptions seem similar. Are they not identical, then, or why did we decide not to put them together?
Yeah, they're very similar. The condition, the general conditions are very similar, but the way the properties can be used or, uh, would be different.
The types of uses for those different.
Yeah, because what they were getting, we had like reception center, and people were coming in asking for, uh, what wouldn't really be a reception center would be more of an event center, but we didn't really have any place else to put it. So, they wanted to, um, and because recreation, I guess because reception centers were allowed in a wide variety of zones, it was conflicting with some neighborhoods and different things. And so they wanted to break it out and be more specific, like, okay, we're gonna allow reception centers in, in these zones, but it's gonna be, we're gonna actually have a definition of what a reception center is. And so it was more to define what it is, rather than, um, I think the restrictions can be very similar, but the uses would be very different.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Was this action generated by state or federal code, or is this just something they dreamed up?
No, so, um, uh, yeah, thanks for that question. So, this was actually, uh, started by a group up in Dry Fork. Uh, they came in proposing some changes to the use table. And as the, um, as the planning commission started looking at that, they, they said, well, there's a lot of, a lot of the changes that you're looking for are maybe changes that we need to review in all the zones, and not just, uh, your specific zones. And so they expanded it to include the, the entire use table. They kind of went through the use table to make, make these changes. So, but it was started originally by a group up Dry Fork.
It seems to me, with this ordinance, you're really restricting the use of private property. That an individual can't really do what he wants to do on his own property, that you've restricted a lot. You can't have semi-private or private, not private, uh, remote campgrounds on my property without this and this. Now, I understand the Health Department, I agree a hundred percent. But if my family wants to park right next door to me and have a tent right next door to me, this will limit that, by what I'm reading, that you say they have to be so far apart, that the spaces have to be so far apart. I'm a little concerned about that.
So, these, um, these are for commercial campgrounds, so. So if you're going to have a group over to stay on your property, a family group or something like that, these don't apply to the, to that instance.
But if I just want to have a primitive campground on my property permanently, hey, people coming through, ride your bikes up here, camp for the night, we're good to go. I can't do it without meeting a whole bunch of rules and regulations. And that steps right in the middle of my private property rights, in my opinion. I think we're trying to legislate too much with this.
Okay. And let me show you kind of what they kind of dealt with, because I think a lot of the planning commission members were the same place you are when, when this first started. But as they started looking at it, they were trying to balance, and I'm going to just get up here to the campgrounds. They were trying to balance the property of the person doing the activity against the property right of the person next door. Because they would, they would have a property right to peace and quiet on their property and to be able to use their property as well without being disturbed by the neighbor. And so in doing that, sometimes putting in some regulations to make the uses more compatible is what they were trying to do. So, I mean, if you look at it, they actually opened up campgrounds to more zones than were allowed before. Campgrounds were, were only allowed in limited, I think just in, I think they were just allowed in these four zones over here initially, which is MG1, let me get down here so we can see it. So it's MG1, RFM, A1D, and ASP. And, and by adding these rules and requirements, it actually opened it up to where they could be allowed in more zones because they could be more compatible with those areas and not affect the, the neighbors as much. And so you wouldn't have conflict between the two different uses of maybe a, a single family residence on a large acreage that maybe has a farm or cattle or things like that. By having some of these requirements, those, those two uses can coincide together without having a whole lot of difficulty or straining a relationship maybe between, between neighbors. And so we were able to allow it in, in more zones than where we were allowing it before.
That's why you always invite your neighbors.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm with you, though. I, I agree. I mean, and I think planning commission, I know there were several of them on there that, they're really staunch property rights people and they wanted to make sure that people's property rights were honored while at the same time honoring property rights of the neighbors of, of those uses as well, so.
Well, in all my years, I had a lot of calls to go up and shut parties down, from, you know, turn the stereos down, whatever.
Yeah.
And I'd say ninety-five percent of the time, it was taken care of right then, without relating that you can't do this and that and this. Party on, but be quiet about it. So I'm...
Yeah, and it would be similar. I mean, we, we don't go out, we don't have the staff or time to go out and monitor these things. So there, it's based on complaints. If, if we get complaints, then we go and, and look. But if, if everything's going along fine and nobody's being disturbed, I guess if, even if they're not following all the, the rules to the T, if nobody's being bothered by it, then we're not going to know about it. Because we're not out there at night checking on these things, making sure that everything's quiet right at ten, ten PM or things like that. But if there is a problem, then it does give, it gives us the ability to go out there and, and be able to enforce the, the rule when it does become a conflict.
Well, I'm a little more concerned because I can sit on 191 and listen to people in the campground over by the lake at nighttime. It carries that much. You know, you can actually hear people talking. So if I have a group and they want to have guitar and they want to play and sing songs, now I'm infringing on other people's rights. But yet, they also have a right, too. And I'm just really concerned that we're trying to limit what people's rights are by going something this far. I'm done.
I, I, okay, I was just going to say, I think the whole purpose was to separate out because people didn't understand the difference between an event center, an entertainment center, and a reception center. And so they were just trying to delineate that so that people could come in and say, oh, mine, I want it to be this, that would fall under this category. And kind of separate them, because people were lumping them all into one. And just saying, I can build this and I can have concerts and I can have receptions and I can do this and I can do that. And they just wanted to separate and give some...
And I wouldn't have a problem if that's what they stopped at. But I think they went way beyond that, in my opinion.
Um, the things in red under the, down at the bottom, the, what'd you say, that not the, really the uses, what do you call that? Not guidelines, the...
The conditions, the general conditions down here?
Were those conditions any different than what they were before?
So, yeah, that was part of the, that was one of the things they ran into, is there weren't general requirements. But with a lot of, a lot of these came about by the conditions that they were putting on reception centers anyway. So, I mean, if you have ten reception centers come in and you have mostly the same conditions, then it makes sense just to say, okay, these are, are general conditions that we're going to put on a reception center because they're, they're things that make sense to, again, to, to try and make it more compatible with the neighborhood. Because you're trying to, I mean, you're trying to put a commercial use into areas that aren't, don't generally have commercial stuff. And so, I mean, I think the, the campgrounds definitely have the most requirements there. I mean, they go down through U. If we get down here into the other things, they go down through G and, and H. And so those were much more limited, I guess, on those ones. I definitely agree with you, though, Commissioner Larson. It's, it's a balancing act and where that line is, I don't, I don't know exactly.
I think they were trying to keep campgrounds per se from being, it's not allowed in residential areas already. I mean, a few areas.
Well, the, the agricultural zones that it's allowed in, I mean, they do have residences there as well.
But I mean, it's not in R1, R2.
Right.
It was, so they're just saying, we don't want a campground right next to my house in a neighborhood type setting in an R1 or an R2 zone. And that's already not allowed. So this is just saying, but if you're going to do it out by my field, my house is there, just making sure it maintains, like he said. I didn't see any of these that looked over restrictive. It, to me, it was a lot of common sense type stuff. You know, like the noise after a certain time, so that there were enforcement, that was a way to enforce those things. Because I know if I'm ever out camping, even up in the mountains, I don't want people being noisy at one o'clock in the morning while I'm trying to enjoy and relax. So I think these were more put in as common sense type things to protect the quiet enjoyment of all the adjoining properties. Would you like more time or?
No.
Okay. I would accept a motion. No motion?
Nope.
Okay, then I guess, do we say this dies for lack of emotion?
Yeah, let me offer a suggestion. It, it sounds like there probably does need to be more time, though, because Commissioner Larson, you've said that there's some provisions that you don't disagree with and there's maybe some that you do. A no, a no motion kills all of it, even the parts that maybe you have agreement with. So I would suggest that maybe we do get this on a work session so we can go through it a little bit more and find those areas that still need to be approved. And then maybe table or hold off on the stuff where there needs to be a little bit more time or just not getting approval. But i- if there's not a motion, just so it's clear, it, it kills everything, even the stuff that you may, may agree with. So I just wanted to offer that suggestion.
But they can take it back and start it all over again and then bring it back.
But even the stuff that you already agree with, so you'd be asking a lot of staff time and a lot of planning and zoning to be working on things that, right now, the commission could be approving at least some, some of the items. And then say, yes, these other items, go, go rework it and come back with another proposal.
I will say that the planning commission did work on this, they have, they've been working on this since December of last year. So they did put considerable time. And I'm not saying that you need to approve it because of that, but...
No, I'm just saying, for those things that are, are ready to go, we might want to look at just modifying this proposal so we can move forward those items that there aren't any, there, there's no disagreement on. And then the things that get...
Pushed aside.
Yeah, ferreted out in, in work session, then those will be, those won't move to the next commission meeting for approval.
So we could actually just move, make a motion to table this until further discussion?
Table it to the next work session if you want. That way, anybody, anybody here who wanted to know, they would know the next time that the commission would be bringing it up. Or, or some other date. I'm, I'm just trying to be efficient on those things where there isn't disagreement. And then make sure we have clarity on the things that there are disagreement. And then either kill it or ask the planning commission to reevaluate. I mean, the, the world's so full of options.
I will make a motion. I'll make a motion that we return this to be looked at again by the planning commission with the idea that there's certain rights that people have with their own property. And I would like to see it revamped quite a bit on certain things.
Okay.
That's my motion.
And do you want it to planning commission or did you want it to a work session?
When's their next planning commission meeting? Do you know, Matt?
Middle of next month.
August.
Uh...
I'm just going to say, we'll send it back. I don't care where it goes. It'll go to you. I mean, it's, it's your department.
I would recommend that it come to the commission. The planning commission has looked at it. They've made a recommendation to you. You don't have to accept the recommendation. And if you think that there needs to be changes, then this is the, the body that would make those changes.
I'll bring it to the next work session. That's my motion.
Okay. Thank you. I, I'll second that. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, then I would recommend that we do the same thing with the resolution as well since the definitions are tied to this.
To the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. So number nine, resolution number six dot twenty-six dot two zero two three R2 will be...
You, you as chair can just table it to coincide with the schedule of the, of item number eight.
Okay. That will be tabled then. Thank you. So now we're on item ten. Briar Creek subdivision, final plat application for a twenty-eight lot subdivision on property owned by N and E Properties LLC, located at fifteen twenty South, five hundred West in Vernal, serial number zero five one zero two zero zero three five, and seven fifty five West, fifteen hundred South in Vernal, which is serial number zero five one zero two zero zero two nine. And Matt, cause here.
All right. And sorry, there's a scripturner's error on there. We sent it down wrong. But this is just the first phase of the twenty-eight lot subdivision. So it'll just, it's the fourteen lots.
So we're not approving the whole subdivision, just the first phase?
Right. Just phase one.
Okay.
And so this is where it's located. It's located right on the corner of fifteen hundred South and five hundred West. Zoned RA1, residential agricultural. It's just east of Quellbrook subdivision there and just north of Sunburst Terrace. It's a little bit closer up. So this, the highlighted area is where phase one would be located. The basic, and we'll get to how it lays out. But you can see on this as well, there is some FEMA floodplain, FEMA designated floodplain in there. The engineer has developed a base flood elevation for that floodplain area. And if the developers want to, they can still work through FEMA to either adjust that for each lot or adjust the boundary there. But the boundary of the floodplain, the current floodplain does have to be shown on the final So here's the overall development, just so you can kind of see what, what it looks like. And so this is phase one here that we're looking at today. And then you have phase two going west and phase three, further west here. So you can see there's, they'll be installing a new road here just south of fifteen hundred south. And then with phase three, it will tie back into fifteen hundred south. And they'll get there, they'll have an extra, or they'll have two entrance exit points for the development. So this is phase one. And so they're coming in off of Fifth West. They'll be installing a temporary turnaround at the end of this so that emergency vehicles or cars or things have a place to turn around. And then that, that's a temporary easement, so that easement will go away once the road's extended through there. Another thing to note that was discussed heavily at the planning commission meetings is there's, you can see this faint line down here on the south side. That's an irrigation line that's installed that serves residents onto the east. That irrigation line doesn't enter this portion of the development. But in phase two and phase three, it will go through the lots within those, those phases, so. The developer isn't going to touch the line, they're just going to leave it where it's They have a pretty good idea of where it's at, and so they've kind of shown where they're, where they believe it to be, but it's not saying that that's exactly where it's at. But they do recognize it on this plat, even though it's not part of phase one, so that, you know, people know that it's there and...
Is that, you don't see that that often? Is it like a recorded easement? Does it have a legal description that shows that's where it is? Is that why they know?
Yeah, so it's, it's not, they don't actually have a recorded easement from the previous property owner. They did record a document that says that they have a line that runs through that property. And the, the thing that they recorded shows the general location of it. But they don't actually have a recorded easement from the previous property owner. But it, the attorney's office did review it and determine, I think Teigen took a look at it. And it kind of falls under a prescriptive type of an easement, but through use, because it's been there for so long.
Okay.
So. And there is some stuff recorded on it, but nothing granting an easement to them from the property owner. I just put this one on here because it shows where the retention basin is going to be. So they own the property south of this as well. And so the stormwater retention is going to be south of phase one here on a piece of property that they own. And so they're working, obviously the county surveyor, maybe he left, but he'll have to review this just to make sure everything's in order as far as that goes, but...
That retention pond, the drain to the retention pond, how is that going to affect the irrigation line?
So it, it shouldn't affect the irrigation line. They're, they're going to have to go over the top of it or underneath it. Yeah.
Okay.
But they won't be, I mean, they won't be moving the line at all to install that.
Okay.
Yeah, will that be involved in phase one?
Yes.
Installing it?
Yep, it'll be, it's part of phase one to be installed. And then it will collect some of the stuff from phase two, and then they have another one in phase three. And I don't know exactly where everything falls, but they're, they're going to have two separate retention areas for the development.
But this is definitely sufficient for phase one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, for, for phase one and, and at least part of phase two.
Okay.
I noticed there's a house involved in there already established, it's not their property.
Yes.
They, or have we heard anything from those folks?
So I have not heard anything from those folks.
And they're notified or it was a public hearing in planning commission?
Yeah, there was a public hearing held in planning commission. And the people for the irrigation line attended that, but those neighbors did not. But, yeah, they'll be getting... But, yeah, they'll be getting some new neighbors next to them.
It sounds like a bunch.
But, but that property isn't involved in the development at all.
Is that, is that one on the, what would you call that, upper northeast side? Is that just one lot?
Yeah, it's one lot and it's bigger because the setback off of 500 West is 83 feet. And then down here on lot 10, within that setback is where they're going to put that eas, the easement for the storm drain, so. Yeah, it'd make a, kind of a small building envelope if that were divided into two, at least on one here.
Okay.
So, yeah, just one lot there. We'll go all the way from 1500 South to the new 1550 South Street.
Big lot.
Okay.
And planning commission did recommend this for approval back in December of 2022, and it was a unanimous vote. And they've, they have posted a cash bond with the clerk auditor's office for the improvements in this portion of the development. And the only thing that we're waiting on is just some minor corrections on the final plat that they need to make. So any approval should be conditioned upon those changes being, being made and obtaining the proper signatures on that final plat. And then they'll have six months to get it recorded.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any questions?
No.
I guess I would accept a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve of the Briar Creek subdivision application for 14 units, i.e. phase one on property owned by N E Properties LLC located at 1520 South 500 West Vernal, serial numbers 051020035 and 755 West 1500 South. That is not really involved, is it?
It, it is.
Well, the addresses are...
tentative, the post office hadn't told them yet.
They're loose when it's a big parcel like that, so.
All right, serial number 051020029, with the stipulation that's approved, the final plat is approved and signed off by everybody prior to any work being done, or however you face it.
Corrections, yeah.
But the corrections have to be made prior to...
Prior to recordation of the plat.
Yes. That's my motion, I'm sticking to it.
Thank you. I will second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Approved. Now, that completes our agenda, except for item 11, which is public comment. So if there was anyone here that would like to make any public comment, please come to the podium. And I don't know if you read the little reminder back on the table, but quickly, public comment reminders. Public comment is a time for public comment, not public debate. The county will listen to the comments made and take them into consideration. The county will not be responding to comments or answering questions. Comments made might not be something the county has the power to act on. This is a recorded public meeting. If someone would like to make a comment, they will need to wait until the microphone is available and state their name for the record. Please be respectful, no interrupting. Please wait your turn. A total of 10 minutes will be allowed, allotted for public comment. Each speaker will have approximately three minutes to make their comments. So if there's any comments, please come to the podium and state your name, and you have
Dwayne Cook, representing the pipeline, the irrigation pipeline that goes through this Briar Creek subdivision. Phase one is not going to affect very much, but lot 14 is going to be on the easement that is recorded with the county. There is a 16-foot easement through there. It is recorded. The pipeline has been located positively where it's at. It has not been recorded with the current landowner, but it was recorded with Clayton Curtis previously. It, it is recorded. I don't know what else to do with this. On the map, we showed that the, the road, the lot had been set back off of 500 West, 83 feet, I think was the, the distance, to accommodate the easement for a drainage to go into the retention pond. Accommodations need to be made for the facilities that are there or going to be there. One of the facilities that are already there is an irrigation pipeline that has delivered water. I have a deed that records water being delivered since 1926. That pipeline has been in there since 1991. We have a prescriptive easement, we have a recorded easement, and I don't see how in phase two and three. And even in phase one, it's within three feet of the pipeline. That encroaches on a 16-foot easement. If we want to go the 16 feet to the south of the pipeline, that leaves us three feet on the north, one foot for the 12-inch pipeline, and 12 feet on the south side of the pipeline, that's doable. But we're going to oppose encroachment on an easement in any means possible for this pipeline group.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment.
I have a comment.
Oh, and Commissioner Larson has a comment.
Just a reminder, I had a visit with the fire marshal today. Just a reminder, there's no restrictions on fireworks, but with this weather that we've had, we've got tall grass, burns fast, so please, responsible, responsibility of parents to watch what your kids are doing, make sure they have some way to extinguish a fire. Because unfortunately with fireworks, if a fire started, they trace it back to you. Guess who's paying that million-dollar bill? You are. So please be real careful with them.
That's my public service announcement for today.
Thank you. And just for a side note, we will not be having a work session or a commission meeting next week due to the 24th holiday. So we will be back in two weeks, and...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
What are you doing tonight? You got a jigsaw or a...